We need to do beforehand, Ron, are you ready for us to go?
Please do.
Okay, well, it's quiet enough that someone who's hearing is only ninety-five percent doesn't hear any disturbance, so why don't we start in? Welcome. I better stand closer. And so, that's good because everybody is gonna have to stand very close. I think your lips are gonna more or less have to touch it to make it work, and it's just as well to have that start obvious right at the beginning. So, welcome to this Athens Town Hall meeting. We'll do two things this evening. In a moment, I'll introduce our mayor for a welcome and for his description of some of the projects in the state of the city at the moment. And then, the primary focus this evening is our open microphone, three minutes for everyone who wants to get up and to speak, subject to the fact that we need to be out of here by eight-thirty. And so far, I have a list of sixteen people who've signed up to speak, and that is quite delightful. So, let me, at this time, introduce our mayor, the Honorable Paul Wile, Mayor of Athens. Mayor Wile.
Okay, thank you. Obviously, we do need to get close to this mic. First of all, thank you for coming. This is another opportunity for us to hear what's going on, some input, for me to give you some information of what's going, what is happening in the city, past and future. First, let me introduce my staff here. We've got it lined up here. My Service Safety Director, Paul Hameran Mosley. My City Planner, Paul Ove, Chief Pyle, right there, who's Police. Andy Stone, who's the Engineer, Director of Public Works and Engineering. Chief Troxel of the Fire Department, and the Deputy Service Safety Director, who's gonna be taking notes. So, if he starts looking like he's frazzled, slow down and you're speaking. Also, I'd like to take this opportunity to have the City Council members who are here and the candidates stand up. Anybody who's running, anybody who is one. Come on, don't be shy. Okay, and the reason why I point this out is because these are your legislators, these are the public people who can ask questions. There is obviously a campaign going on, so this is an opportunity to address the issues and know who they are when you do that. Thank you. I also like to thank the Town Hall Committee people, Milt, who's out there doing something, and I know Carol, the Leguon Voters as well, Athens Leguon Voters, which I am a member of, and I suggest, let me do a plug, that you join as well, because this is how we get an elevation of the, of the issues. So, with that in mind, let me cover what's going on in the city. I think I have ten minutes, is that what I'm hearing?
Yep.
Or less, okay. The budget's pretty much came in nicely last year. I would have to give kudos to our auditor, Kathy Heck. We also were very frugal on my staff, we actually kept a tight range on their costs and money. I do have budget concerns, of course, the state is doing various things, they're doing a uniform tax increase, income tax regulations, which will probably cost about two-hundred-thousand dollars, at least according to calculations. Speaking of tax, I'm sure some of you got the CAA letter in green. I have some handouts in the back there of the procedures to deal with that, if you have any questions. And I see we have Kathy Heck who just came in, so we could actually quiz her on it. But the fact is that you go to the city website and you can find out all about that, but as I say, there's handouts in the back. There's also handouts for the Disabilities Commission, which I think is very important to know about, and there's also a handout for the city organization, charter of organizational of the city. So, you have those back there, only printed about forty each, so you're gonna be limited, but we can always get more if need be. Some of the other things that are going on. We are going to have this year, of course, our every other year Household Hazardous Waste Pickup. Technically, that will be, we're looking at April twenty-seventh. So, that will probably be at the community center here, so Save Your Batteries, which is what you do every year, or every two years. This is to pull out all the hazardous materials, the e-waste, the paints, the, you know, all the toxins out there and make sure they don't end up in the landfill. Our Solid Waste District is undergoing changes. It's out of my control, but I want you to be aware of that. The hazardous waste will be ending at the spring cleanup, which we always do the last week of April. Other changes that have been occurring, of course, is that the Athens Public Transit System has been administered now by HAPCAP, who is in the midst of doing some changes. They will probably do some route changes in the end of the year, towards the end of the year. One of the representatives here is Michael Lockman. Can you stand up, Michael? Okay, he is going to be changing the bus system, he is running the bus system, he's doing a good job so far, and we'll go from there. But there will be changes. Okay, so we're doing that, we have done some other things that occurred. Of course, we have CGI that's came in this spring, actually, the end of last year, they're a IT company that's on East State Street at the old McBee Plant or the Tech Park out there. We have some historic preservation legislation in place. Last year, of course, we donated some lots for Habitat for Humanity. Some of the projects, we did the hardware projects for 2012, was, of course, we did the North Court Street Storm Tunnel Replacement and re-bricked it. That was about four-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars, fourteen thousand dollars. We also did two rounds of Get Everything Done for the Safe Routes to School, Season Two and Three, tubing, of course, the stairs, elementary school stairs, and the four-two, the Armory stairs. And I mention those because those of Round Two, again, that was about a hundred-and-fifty-thousand change. The other ones, of course, are the sidewalks on Shannon, we're finishing up the Miller, Miller and Arch West sidewalk there. That was about another hundred-and-seventy. If I say anything wrong, raise your hand and let me know. I am not perfect, these guys make me look good, and I don't mind them telling me when I am off-base. Okay? Okay. Other things, of course, we've gone into debt for about eight-hundred thousand to do some of the water projects, Ransom, Harris, McGuffey, Joneswood, Riverview Terrace, waterline replacements, most of that's been borrowed. We, of course, did the Grover Street retaining wall and slip, I'm sure some of you've noticed that. We did rehab of the draining of that, all told between both of those, I think about three-hundred thousand and change. We also did a small project on Hickory Street, this is behind CNAE Hardware, in conjunction with a developer there who's put a PUD down, that was about eighty thousand. We did our annual paving, about four-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. That's where your, that extra point-one percent bump went for the income tax two years ago, starting two years ago. We also finished some energy upgrades for our wastewater treatment plant, to the tune of about five-hundred-and-eighty thousand, almost six-hundred thousand. Most, the majority of that was coming out of the ARA, the stimulus package of Obama from two thousand nine, so it came in handy at that point. We also finished up Phase Two of the Columbus Circle Access Road. For those who don't know what that is, that is basically where the nursing home of Laurel's is, going around off of Columbus Road. That, of course, was Phase One, Phase Two, I forget the total was somewhere, do you remember? I don't have it written down here. It's about eight-hundred?
Give me just a second.
He's got the notes. Phase One, ain't you?
Six-hundred, six-hundred-and-seven thousand, approximately.
Okay.
Both phases, four-hundred thousand of that came from Appalachian Regional Commission on Agrodevelopment.
Okay, so we got it from ARC money, Appalachian Region Commission money, about six-hundred thousand, which is not bad. Some of the things we're gonna be doing for two thousand thirteen, of course, let's see what we got here. We've got, we'll be doing the Oxbo Bridge. That will be the major one for us, one of the major ones, it'll be the most imposing for everybody, because it will be closed down. Richland Avenue, I'll buy that bridge by Baker Center, it will be all torn up, and we hope to get it all done in time for schools to get back. That project is about, let's see, I think we're talking about three-and-a-half million dollars. We started some of the stuff this year, getting the engineering, buying some of the equipment, staging it. We're also gonna be another large ticket item, what you won't see is the wastewater treatment plant, we're talking about almost fifteen million dollars on that, if not more, depending on the alternatives that we have to put in it. That will make that energy more efficient, hopefully not smell and be, have better capacity. We'll change some of the things, get rid of some of the chemicals and go to UV. Columbus Road and Lancaster improvements, we're talking about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on that. That will also be another one that will impact us, because we'll have that road partially shut down. I hope not entirely, not entirely, okay. Okay, and we're doing the design itself on that, is that what I hear? Okay, so that's another project. There's also talk about doing a patent street water line, that's about another eighty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars. Patent Street is a very small street, has a lot of problems, though. We are trying to get ourselves in a position for the University of State's street repair, but that takes, will take an assessment process, and that will take some time. South Side Park, of course, we're gonna have to finish up, we didn't get the rubber matting down in time for the weather. We'll do it in the spring or whenever it gets warm enough to do. That being said, I think, and I would like to thank the Athens Rotary for doing the lion's share of improving that, too. I have to give their credit for them, because they did a good job of that. So, again, back to other things that are my concerns, and I'll just run through some of the concerns I have here at this point. One is the Solid Waste District. It's run by the county, Hocking County and Athens County. We have a zero-waste court concept out there, we have an idea of just to go, you know, just outsource it. In one case, it will change what we're going to be doing. We may end up not doing sorting anymore, we may end up having to call, doing, of course, increase costs. That's up in the air at this point. Some of the other things I worry about, of course, is the, let's see, other projects, long-term projects, of course, is we're still trying to get money together for Richland South, it's from Dairy all the way down to the old Palmeroy Road. That, we need a good chunk of money, we're not there yet. We're also gonna be working on a bike, bike bridge on Columbus Road, like a spur going from Columbus Road to the bike path across the river. We're putting that, trying to put that together, and continuation of the Northwest Bike Spur. This is the bridge that goes to nowhere on the West Side Park. So, those are some of the things we have in the long term, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, if possible. Other concerns, I look back over the past Town Hall meetings, we've had several, of course, we've had, we've had one usually this way, this January one, we get input from you guys. June, we come, we get information out to you guys. Usually, we have a third one, depending on what the topics are. At this point, the topics could be as broad as, I think last time was actually housing, housing for those with disabilities and mental illnesses. We might focus on something else if something perks up that we consider very important at this point, if we see a consistency of needs. Also, looking back at the last year's one, I realized that the concerns were of the closing of an elementary school. If you remember, there was concern about closing something there. Chancy, of course, was one that got the, got the bullet, I guess. We're also concerned about fracking, I am still concerned about that. Injection wells have actually raised their head on that. Again, the frustration there is that ninety percent of the controls is in the state's level, but what I'm looking at, again, between the grassroots and the groundswell we're doing, and Youngstown, of course, you probably all know about it, they just dumped a quarter million gallons of brine in somebody's creek, and that was, you know, that's what we're gonna be looking at. So, the idea there is, there's, a pushback is coming. The question is, you know, we should be part of it? How did, what strategies can we use when the law says we have no say in it? But again, these, you know, just like me, I'm a public servant, I respond to what you guys have, your concerns, I have to assume all the way up the chain, all the way up to the governor, that's the same thing. I went to the municipal, Ohio Municipal League last week, luncheon. Two of the four, we had two senators talking, we had two Congress legislators there talking, two of the four said, "We need to hear from you." That's what they said. They said, "Don't hesitate to tell us that there's a problem, if there's something that we need." They need your input, just as much as I need your input. I can't solve everything with a magic wand, I can't do everything with a magic wand, but I can take it in. And I, anecdotally, most of the time when somebody says something, writes a letter to me, more than likely, there's a good number of people out there who feel the same way. You know, the ratio, some people say is ten-to-one, some people say is fifty-to-one, but that's where your, your, your input counts, because you say something, you've now added something to that level of their concern. It's now on their horizon, it's now on my horizon, okay? So, that's what I have in mind. And that's why I point out to all the legislators who are running now. I see Barkus came in there, right there, okay, he's a little late, but there's another candidate right there. The idea there is that we have to, we have to engage constructively on what we need, where we wanna go. And I'm gonna call it at that point, I think that's it. I think I did my ten minutes already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wile. Well, now, we'll go to the open microphone portion of our meeting, and the purpose of this open microphone session is to invite residents to identify local priorities and concerns. Each speaker, as most of you know, will be given three minutes, and precisely, no more than three minutes, and our timekeeper will let you know on an ongoing basis how much time you have. And we will say, "Three minutes means three minutes." Why don't you just wave, hold that up so people can see what's coming? There's the fifteen-second and the thirty-second one. Now, just to illustrate why, you've all heard of the Hatfields and the McCoys, it's hard to live in this world without having heard of them. Well, our timekeeper tonight is David McCoy, he's one of the McCoys. Next year, we'll go back and have a Hatfield, so, and then, well, and so, we'll sort of say, on a serious note, if you go over, it's my role, gently but firmly, to ease you off. So, three minutes means three minutes, and you focus on that, and you can tell us more than fifteen minutes of just talking. Okay, our intent this evening is to identify issues for our community, not to provide answers. And this coming June, we will plan to have a companion meeting, and at that meeting, the mayor and his staff will give their responses to the topics which we raised this evening. Now, just as one little protocol, if the mayor or one of his staff members wishes, he or she may have up to half a minute to respond to one of your questions, and for clarification, you can have another thirty seconds if appropriate. And so, with that, I'll say that my role as moderator is to do my best to give all of you here this evening a productive community experience. And with that, let's start in, and I have a list of people who've signed up, and we'll start off. Leslie Schaller is the first one who signed up this evening. Organization is ACENet, and the topic, Goals for Local Purchasing. Leslie?
Great.
Let me speak real close.
Okay, thanks, Ellsworth. I'm going to try not to stand too far behind the podium, so people can actually see me. So, I am going to talk for exactly three minutes, because I have created a PowerPoint show that I have time to exactly three minutes. So, I think the issue that really confronts us every day is we make choices, usually three or four times, as to what we want to eat. And so, what I am urging everyone in our community, certainly Athens County, and all throughout Appalachia, Ohio, is that we have tremendous power of the fork, so, or the spoon, or your fingers. So, when you think about our local food economy, we have seen tremendous growth in recent years. This is work that is really animated by hundreds, if not thousands, of food and farm entrepreneurs. And what I always like to do, when I have the opportunity to get in front of folks and share our story, is really to show, you know, these incredible rock stars, really, of our local food system. So, support local restaurants, support grocery stores that buy local, encourage your school cafeteria ladies, your school administrators, the cafeterias that maybe your employers operate, to source more and more local. If we all shift ten percent of our purchasing power every week to local food, it will have a tremendous economic impact in this community. We are well-known, Athens is really the epicenter of this artisan food movement in Ohio. People come all over the place, all throughout Ohio, central Appalachia, nationally and even internationally, to learn from these innovative models that have been created by the food and farm entrepreneurs in this area. The city of Athens is ground zero. We have new brand programs like the Thirty Mile Meal, that really crows about this tremendous success that we've been able to accomplish as a community. So, please, continue to patronize your local businesses. Whenever you're out at your favorite restaurant, when you're shopping at your favorite grocery store, when you're making a decision whether it's buying food at a local convenience store, eating in a cafeteria, ask some questions. Try and identify where that food comes from, because we all have the power. We are the people that we have been waiting for. We can make this change happen in our community. We're doing a great job, there's still a lot of room for us to improve upon. And when you look at the fact that our county population has increased, that only gives us even more economic buying power. So, support your local farmers, support these wonderful institutions, figure out how you can leverage more public and private investment in this incredible economy that many of you, I know I'm speaking to the choir, have helped reinvent in this community. Thanks.
There's nothing like having someone come right in on three minutes, point zero-zero-zero, that's a great way to start. Our next speaker is Mary Nally, Community Food Initiatives, and the topic, Upcoming Projects. Mary?
Hi, thanks, everyone. So, my name is Mary, and I am the Director for Community Food Initiatives. We are a twenty-year-old nonprofit whose mission is to build local food access for everyone in the community, so that our local food system supports not only all of our great local businesses and those who can afford to purchase food, but even for those who do not. So, our initiatives assist people in growing food and developing cooking skills, and we do this really by focusing on access and education as the two key entry points to do this. We focus on the immediate needs through our Donation Station Program, that you've probably seen at the Athens Farmers Market. We collect donations of food and funds and then distribute them to area food pantries and social service agencies. In two thousand and twelve, we distributed over forty-four-thousand-three-hundred pounds of food to thirty-five food pantries and agencies. We are the only other distributor of fresh food, aside from our regional food bank in Logan. We also focus on long-term needs through our community gardens, of which we have six in the community, and seven, a seventh one coming up on the south side of town here at Carriage Hill Apartments. We had fifty gardeners over our six community gardens in two thousand and twelve, and we're expecting a thirty percent growth rate for this coming year. We also support school gardens and community orchard projects, as well as the YACIDS, which are the youth entrepreneurs at Hope. These are young teens that live at Hope Drive Apartments, low-income housing, they have a production garden, grow their own food, make their own value-added products at ACENet, and then sell that at the Athens Farmers Market as their summer job. They made over eight-hundred dollars last year. In terms of education, we are focusing on our garden and food preservation workshops. These are always open to the community, they're free for our members, are five dollars for non-members. We had thirty-two workshops in two thousand and twelve, and we're also starting a new program called Discovery Kitchen, which will be doing healthy cooking classes in the food pantries and agencies that are distributing Donation Station food. So, we're trying to really get the education out there in terms of, you know, people are gonna eat more local food and eat more healthy food if they know what the heck to do with it. So, our plans for two thousand and thirteen include those. The Donation Station will also now be at the Chester Hill Produce Auction, and I just wanted to thank all of you very much. The Athens community is about half of our budget, so the bulk of what we do, we're able to do because of community members like you, so thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Nothing like two out of two for people who don't go over even by a tenth of a second, so that's a magnificent way to start something. Next speaker, Dr. David Descutner of Ohio University, and the topic is the upcoming David Descutner.
Thank you so much. First of all, I really appreciate the invitation to be here tonight. This is my thirty-third year in Athens, and I couldn't imagine living anyplace else, it's an extraordinary community. When I look around the room and see so many friends and people I've known so long, and the commitment we all have to making this a better community, and how it's become a better community in the last thirty-three years is nothing short of remarkable. I want to talk to you about three things tonight, and I'm gonna be very brief about it. I, first of all, want to thank the city and everybody in this region, in this town, in this university, for working on behalf of disabilities. President McDavis cares about this, everybody in our university is trying to pull together on this front, we have a real strong commitment to this, and that this is being featured tonight really means a great deal to me and a great deal to everybody that I know in this town, so thank you so much. The second issue I want to bring up is sustainability. Even though Ellsworth didn't know I was gonna mention this, we have a real effort going on with sustainability, both in the university and the region. Anything that we could do together to tackle these serious questions of how we have a future together, that isn't damaged, that isn't compromised, so we leave something as vital as we have right now, as rich and healthy as we have right now, would really matter. Any ideas you have, any initiatives you want to pursue, any concerns you want to raise, please bring it to Annie Laurie Katmas, bring it to me, bring it to the Voynivit School. We really want to do this work together. None of us can succeed with this large effort on sustainability without doing this together, so please approach us about this. We have resources, we want to help you, and we want to help to make this region a model of sustainable growth and sustainability. What I've been asked to talk with you tonight about, and this is really why I want to make my invitation to you, is that we're gonna do things better together than we have to do things civilly and with a genuine appreciation for difference. And what I want to offer the men and women in the community, and particularly, in fact, Chief Powell participated inside, John Schmieding participated inside, we've had six community members over the last three years. It's the Summer Institute for Diversity Education. We've had seventy-two men and women participate in this, it's gonna be this May fourteenth through the seventeenth. This is a very, very important commitment on my part. I'm standing before you as the Interim Vice Provost for Diversity and Inclusion at Ohio University, and both those words are important. So, just an appreciation for difference, it's about inclusion. And what I'm asking tonight is consider being included in our effort, the Summer Institute for Diversity. This isn't just about passing through an experience, this is about acquiring and understanding of how to work together, to dialogue together, and much more fundamentally, to build capacity so you train and educate one another. What I'm prepared to offer is five members of the community, full scholarships for diversity, the Summer Institute for Diversity. It's three-hundred dollars. All you have to do, in a week and a half, we're gonna have a site in university college where you can apply for a three-hundred-dollar scholarship. Of course, I'm welcoming the mayor and his team to participate, but I'm welcoming men and women in the community to participate as well. Please take us up on this opportunity, I would love to see you here this summer as we grow better together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Our next presenter, speaker will be Dr. Ryan Lombardi of Ohio University, and the university's Housing Master Plan. Ryan Lombardi.
Thank you, sir. I was trying to get up here. Good evening, thank you so much for having me here tonight, just to speak for a moment, or three moments, actually, about the Housing Master Plan. Some of you may have heard of this, the university is looking over the next ten years to really refurbish a lot of its housing stock. In those next ten years, we plan to touch about sixty percent of our beds on campus, either through renovation or new construction. The area that we have some displacement, I mean, there's Christine Sheets from Student Affairs, also Dana Espinal, a couple of my colleagues in Student Affairs that are helping with this tremendously. The area I wanted to focus on is really South Green. Some of you might know it as New South or Back South. It's not new anymore. These spaces back here, the narrow, tall buildings that were kind of built on stilts because they're in a flood plain, those were built in a hurry back in the late sixties, early seventies, when we had a significant enrollment boom at the university. They are now costing us millions of dollars a year to keep standing, literally. The infrastructure there was not done as it should be, so it's actually more economical at this point for us to tear those down and start over than to try and refurbish those. So, we're doing a plan in three phases, and I want to say a couple of things about the plan, and then I'll point these out. The three phases, at the end of these phases, we do not anticipate being able to accommodate a single additional Ohio University student on campus, so we're not changing our capacity at all on campus. Again, it's about refreshing the space we do have and maintaining our current levels of capacity. The other thing I'll mention about housing, how we pay for housing, housing does not receive any of the tuition dollars that students pay, nor does it receive any state government dollars that come into the university. Housing completely funds itself by the room rates that students do pay, so it doesn't tap into those other pots of money. So, this South Green is gonna be in three phases. This is the first phase, right here, and this is where Wolf Street Apartments and the current parking lot for Adams Hall are. The site work is beginning on that this summer, with groundbreaking in the fall, and an opening in two thousand and fifteen, that's about nine-hundred beds. Once we get that open, we'll begin to take down some of the buildings that are here in the Back South. We'll then, in Phase Two, replace those with some larger buildings behind the front four of South Green there, which will remain, the front four will remain. So, that's Phase Two. The third and final phase, then, is to take down the rest of the buildings on the Back South and add this one in the Morton Parking Lot, and this one back here behind Adams Hall. We're also trying to make this space here, which currently is a few-way, more green space, more of a pedestrian-friendly, more of a space where we're really being encouraged for bicycle traffic, foot traffic, those kinds of things, to make that very pedestrian-friendly. So, we've been having many conversations with our partners in the city about this. It is a plan that's evolving very, very much, very rapidly. None of this is finalized, but these are conceptual images of what this could look like down the road. So, we're very excited about what it's gonna do for our student and its long-term viability. I'm almost out of time, so I'm gonna leave it at that, but we do have these boards here and outside, if you have questions, we can have to entertain them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan Lombardi. Our next speaker is Michael Lockman of Athens Public Transit, and the topic is Athens Public Transit Upgrade. Michael Lockman.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time. I'll be very brief. I don't think I'm going to make it to three minutes. I just want you to know that we at HACCAP and Athens Public Transit are working on a major system plan, an update, a streamlining of our routes, an improvement of frequency of buses, and we're working very closely with all the fine faces in city government that you see before you. But we're a public system, and we really cannot function without public involvement. And we want to hear what all of you have to say about some of these ideas and to hear your ideas and your feedback. And so, the main thing that I'm here tonight to do is to invite you to a series of public hearings that we're going to be holding. We don't have these scheduled. We don't have dates yet, but I can tell you the timeframe. They're going to be in late March to early April. There's going to be at least three of them. And please, 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 keep your eyes open. I'm going to be doing the best to get the word out about these as we schedule them, but I would love to see as many of you in this room and your friends and relations and whoever else that can come at these hearings to share whatever you have to say about what we're bringing to the table of plans, what your own ideas are. So, thank you for your time, and have a good evening, and continue.[695.54][695.54](APPLAUSE).
Let me just add something to Michael, what he's talking about here. Lance Rep, who's the County Mobility Coordinator, pointed out very succinctly in the past couple of meetings I've been at, that almost everybody usually outlives their ability to drive a car by about eight years. And really what I want to point out here is that we need input on how to make the public transit system work for everybody, work for us forever. So, when we are in adage, which I'm getting there, I can actually not have to get in my car. That's why I live in the city, so I don't have to get in my car, but I can get around the city regardless of my abilities. And that's really what we need to work on for the future, okay? I, 30 seconds, I know, I'm up. Okay, here you go.[746.54][746.54](LAUGHTER). I just want to reiterate that.
Thank you, Paul. Well, there's one person for whom one would stretch that, and that's our mayor. So, and I will tell him that. His staff members, they toe the mark. We citizens toe the mark, but after all, we call him the honorable, and he gets a little bit of stretch on that. That just goes with being mayor. Okay, our next speaker is Mark Barsamian of the Far East Side Neighborhood Association and its upcoming initiatives of the Far East Side Neighborhood Association. I don't see anyone heading this way. Well, so, maybe he isn't here. All right. Michael Bloom, then, of Athens Works, Independent Working Issues. So, we'll give you a chance to get up here, Michael. Michael Bloom.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Michael Bloom, and I work for a small Athens-based game studio called Lightborn Lore. We started up in 2010, and since then, we have experienced some of the challenges and opportunities of being a small business in Athens. And one of our everyday challenges is the lack of an office. We simply can't afford one, and so that means our ability to work together is largely based on our ability to work apart. And thankfully, we're not the only people to experience this sort of lack of office problems. And last year, I met several of the people who were willing to actually do something about it. And so, together, we formed Athens Works, whose purpose is to support the independent professionals of Athens who otherwise have to work from home or a coffee shop in order to get their work done. So, we created a coworking space at 29 East Carpenter where people could do just that. They could come in, they could work, whatever their hours were, we could accommodate, whether they have to work at a laptop or need to use the space for alternative, it means we wanted to support whatever we could. And so, what we're doing now is trying to expand, trying to get the word out. On March 22nd, we're going to be having a public project showcase where we want to highlight some of the things that people of Athens are doing, what the creative endeavors, what the technological developments that people are striving to make realities, we want to show off. And so, we want to invite everyone here to come and join us. And also, if you know anyone who works from home, send them to us.[910.04][910.04](LAUGHTER). So, yeah, overall, our concerns are really just creating more visibility for independent professionals of Athens and giving them the support network that they need. Because for a lot of us, we've been through or are going to go through what the rest of us have already done. And being able to consult with other people who share our issues is probably the most useful thing to us who are trying to ultimately make our own livings. Thank you.[941.95][941.95](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Michael Bloom. Our next speaker is Carolyn Bailey Lewis, and the topic is mobility, streets, curb cuts, and sidewalks.
I'm also here to advocate for, we have forms like this to make sure that our, so clearly we have to move chairs and to be sensitive whenever you have an event to make sure that the little chairs can get hurt. So, I simply ask that you come on a journey with me to roll around in my chair. With this power chair, I can make it most places around Athens, but I have to make sure my seatbelt's tightened, or I might fall into a sinkhole somewhere. And I'm here to advocate for a plan, and for those who have the power and the money behind the plan, for all of the streets of Athens. There is such discrepancy on one side of the street, there could be the rumble strip, and then you get halfway through, and on the other side, you've got to figure out how you want to get up that curb. So, with this chair, I can make it pretty well, but I have a manual chair also, and it's next to impossible to get it from here to there in a straight line. For those of you that are pretty much able-bodied right now, roll around or roll around in my chair. So, I encourage us to do another walk and roll tour of Athens, Court Street, Union Street uptown, downtown, and just to be aware that it's really not easy and it's not very inviting when people come to Athens. We want to make it a model place, a model for mobility for visitors and those of us who live here. Thank you.[1051.32][1051.32](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Carolyn Bailey Lewis. Our next speaker is Dick McGinn, and the topic, Bill of Rights.
On Tuesday, November 5th, 2013, the citizens of Athens will have the opportunity to vote on a community bill of rights for Athens and whether to protect those rights by prohibiting shale and oil gas extraction and disposal of fracking wastes within Athens and its jurisdiction. The Bill of Rights Committee is still waiting to hear from city council whether they will, whether the vote will be coming in the form of a referendum put up by city council, or whether we, the people, will put it up ourselves in the form of a ballot initiative. The Ohio State Constitution is a wonderfully progressive document. It allows citizens as well as municipalities to vote their own laws into existence by either process. Either way, we will propose a new law to protect the civil rights of every citizen to life, liberty, pursuit of happiness, and a safe and pollution-free environment. But we are here tonight for a second purpose as well. We are here to urge the mayor, our city council, and our county commissioners to take an even more progressive step forward. We urge all of our elected officials to join together to convene an emergency meeting of community leaders and citizens from sister cities and villages and townships, all sharing the same watershed and aquifer, including Lancaster, Logan, Nelsonville, and Albany. They should be invited to an all-day conference to be held soon, as soon as possible, in Athens. The purpose is to share ideas and plans and to discuss ways our communities can work together, leaders and citizens alike, to protect the environment from threat of pollution by the oil and gas industry. The core of the meeting should be a declaration of the civil right of every citizen and municipality to live in a clean and safe world. The sad reality is that there are unjust laws that favor the rights of corporations over the rights of people and municipalities alike. We must begin by educating ourselves. We must realize that our civil rights cannot be taken away unless we cooperate in our own disenfranchisement. It is also true that one community acting alone cannot possibly protect the water just by passing one law. But all cities, villages, and townships up and down the watershed can protect each other by passing similar civil rights laws and rallying and ratifying them at the ballot box by vote of citizens. Thank you very much, and I have a partner who's going to give some graphics.[1262.33][1262.33](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Dick McGinn. And our next speaker will be Rob Wiley, and also the topic, Bill of Rights. Rob?
Thank you. Thank you all for this opportunity. I'd like to rise to speak to support the Bill of Rights Committee, to advance that Community Bill of Rights Initiative that would assert local health, safety of the population here over the corporate privileges and state unconstitutional usurpations of local control. I'm here to provide some practical explanatory information about the landscape-level protective effort that such a law would provide for our rare and limited resource for drinking water supply here in the Hocking Valley Aquifer. My name, by the way, is Robert Wiley. I'm a resident of Athens County. I'm an obligatory consumer of the water that comes out of the Hocking River Aquifer, and I'm a water resources consultant for the last 35 years, so I have a little bit of knowledge about this. The practical effort of the proposed initiative would be to prohibit industrial practices associated with the implementation of deep shale horizontal fracking methods within a shallow aquifer, alluvial aquifer upon which Athens County and many of the communities around here rely. The Hocking River Aquifer supports approximately 90% of the population of the county, a little bit of Megs County as well. I don't have time to go into this in huge technical detail, although I'd love to. So, I'd like to just provide some elementary technical information to the mayor, members of councils here. I brought some extra copies that I think Dick handed out for me, that shows a few slides explaining some of the issues involved. And I wish I had a PowerPoint. I do, as a matter of fact, but I didn't know there was going to be a projector here I could use. Anyway, I have to just tell you what these slides are briefly. The first one is an image, if you'll, if you take a look at it with me there, Mr. Mayor. The first one is an image of Athens and Megs County, and it shows the Hocking Valley Aquifer. It's a thin blue ribbon on top of Megs County. The rest of that brown area doesn't produce water. It produces from a negligible amount to less than five gallons a minute. So, this just is to show that all of our water comes from this singular resource. If you get up past Lancaster, the entire rest of the state to the northwest is an aquifer. This is all we have right here. Figure two, just some explanation on what an aquifer is, what it's all about, what a valley aquifer is, how it works. The water runs in, runs down, flows through unconsolidated material at the bottom, and we catch it as it goes by. Oh, good Lord. Figure three is a typical section of the Hocking Aquifer. Figure four shows what a protective effort passed by the city of Athens would be in the Hocking Valley, and it shows a, how much of the watershed would be covered. Figure five shows the compounding effect of all of the municipalities up and down the river. Thank you very much.[1474.25][1474.25](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Rob Wiley. Our next speaker is Michelle Ajamian, and the topic is Food Policy Council. Is this Michelle coming this way? If you'd like to have something passed out, I can do that.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me here. I'm Michelle Ajamian, and I am the coordinator of the Athens Food Policy Council, which actually began with a bit of seed money from the city in 2009. And in that first year, we were able to pass a resolution and ordinance with the help of Michael Lockman, who you heard from before, so that everyone in the city is free to grow food in their front yards, among other things. But that's a pretty exciting thing. We don't need to mow lawns. We need to eat food. Now, Leslie earlier talked about this idea of a 10% shift, and she also said, I'm speaking to the choir. You probably are all consuming, purchasing, supporting local food in this community. But the next step, and a really important step in what the Food Policy Council is about, is connecting the dots between local food economy and food access. There are a lot of people in this community, 25% who live below the poverty line. There are a lot of children, a higher percentage, who are not getting food. And we realize that to build a sustainable, equitable, and healthy food system and to have a 10% shift, those are the people we need to remember. And some of us maybe have been those people or are those people right now. So, in the next few months, the Policy Council will be holding some public forums called "Let's Talk Local Food." And the idea of these forums, one of them will be here at the community center, and we don't have those dates yet, but the other three will be out in the county to find out what people's knowledge is about local food, about organic GMO, where food is available, where it's not available, what their access is to food, et cetera. And what we need to do as a council to be better informed, as a council of largely professionals, about what is really hitting people at home and at school. And we hope that you can help us get started, because I just passed out this draft survey, and if you all fill it out, it will help us improve the survey as we go out into the county. And when you complete it, please put them at the back table, and someone here will collect those, and we'll take a look at them. Thank you so much.[1667.33][1667.33](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Michelle Ajamian. Next, I'll call upon Larry Jagaman, and Larry's topic is Assisting Your Neighbor. Larry Jagaman.
Thank you. I come to you as a resident of Athens, the Far East Side Neighborhood, and as a member of the Athens City Commission on Disabilities. And actually, I rephrase the title as "Can I Do Better? Can We Do Better?" as a resident of Athens. Starting, can I do better at helping my neighbor this winter? How about helping my neighbor who is older and afraid to get out when it's cold, snowy, and slick? Can I do better? Sure, yes, I can. How about helping that neighbor who is home alone since the children have moved away or the spouse has passed away? Could I help by calling, sending a card, shoveling, having dinner together, or offering to pick up groceries when I'm shopping? Who comes to mind whom I have neglected? Oh, yes, my neighbor in the next block. How could I do better? I need to ask her. How do you answer these questions? How about helping that neighbor or family member who has a disability? Could I offer to go along to their meeting to facilitate for someone who has a hearing loss or has trouble communicating? Could I offer to come over to talk with somebody who's distressed or depressed? Yes, I will. Could I offer a ride for someone who uses a walker or a wheelchair? Yes. Could I make Could I make a hospital or a home visit with a person who is ill? Can I do better? Yes, I can. Who with a disability comes to your mind who you've not helped recently? Could I? Could we? Could my community, our community, our community organization, our neighborhood association, our city help organize me, or us, or our family, or our organization, or our neighborhood to reach out to those who need help? Can we do better? Yes, I think we can. Life is cold during winter. Life is colder when neglected. Life is bitter when no one seems to care. February the 14th is near. How could we show our love and caring to our family, our relatives, our neighbors? Can I do better? Can we do better?
Thank you, Larry Jagaman. Now I'd like to call upon Robin Brigante. Robin? Here she comes, and her topic is Mobility. How will you get settled?
Good evening to all. My name is Robin Brigante, and I'm on the boards of the Athens City Commission on Disabilities. I'd like to begin by thanking the mayor, members of committee, and the citizens of the community for offering opportunities to me. I represent individuals and families which have been affected by handicap resulting from accident, injury, or debilitating illnesses, as many of them are myself and disabled. However, I continue to remain a strongly supportive member of the Athens community. As an Ohio University alumnus, I am dedicated to counseling and continuing education. Although our area is very supportive and accommodating to the handicapped and disabled, there remain certain issues which require appropriate attention and action. The disabled perform all activities common to the average person. We shop at Krogers, Walmart, dine in local restaurants, attend sporting events, and support local businesses. As I speak, a primary concern and needing attention is handicap accessibility and equality. Most stores and restaurants in our town are very accommodating, but many going out of their way to provide appropriate facilities and allowances. Issues arise when a small number of individuals disregard areas specifically for use by which restricted individuals require said access. As a collective group, we feel that certain matters can be resolved and improved by community education and awareness programs. Incorporation of city ordinances related to enforcement of maintaining handicap accessibility to those who are related to the enforcement of maintaining handicap accessibility, those who are dependent on them, and license for their use would be a positive government action. Such measures and advanced measures would announce that the city of Athens remains on the continuing path of being a nationally recognized city with a caring, supportive, and positive approach to citizens, students, veterans, and all who call it home. Once again, I'd like to thank all listening and sincerely appreciate your attention and shared concern on these matters. To continue and future understanding, along with the further of support with programs which advance the accommodation, which is of us physically challenged, is greatly appreciated. Please feel free to speak with me following the town meeting, or if you have any suggestions or concerns, you may address them to the mayor's office. Also, there are some flyers from the Athens City Commission on Disability on the back table, and I'd like to thank you again for letting me speak to you.
No, here you go, longer tether. I think that's your limit right there.
Just to briefly respond, of course, we do have parking enforcement and the police department. Police officers both will enforce handicap parking in the publicly marked spots. It is true that we can enforce, both parking enforcement and the police officers can enforce on private property, properly marked handicapped parking space. That is the issue. We've tried to work for several years with local merchants and to get the spaces properly marked so that they can be enforced, and very few of them in town are actually, Steve Patterson knows about this, we discussed it, I've been to the Disabilities Commission and discussed this issue, and Andy Stone, the EPW director, is well aware because he's the person we talked to to get the spaces in public marked properly. So if you do see spaces that aren't being enforced, if you could just let us know so that we can check on them to see if they're properly marked, chances are they're not, and that's why they're not being enforced. Okay?
Thank you, T. Flyo, and thank you, Robin Brigante. Our next speaker is John David Miller, and the topic, Geoengineering. John David Miller?
I want to speak on something that is more important than fracking even, and we're familiar with a lot of those, fracking and food issues we saw. Stratospheric aerosol geoengineering, does anyone know what I'm talking about? We have several days a week airplanes spraying in our skies, crisscrossing pattern of aerosol sprays that contain toxic ingredients. They look like this when they're heavy. For those that can't see that far, I'll pass that around. You may have seen them. They are not contrails. They're not just water vapor condensing into ice that we've always seen from airplanes, but they're up there disguised to look like that. Some people put this in the realm of conspiracy. I don't mind being called a conspiracy theorist. We're living in an era of nondisclosure, of disinformation, of hidden agendas, and what we, I want to share with you a list of ingredients that have been found by scientists in the chemtrails, as they're called commonly, silver iodide, aluminum, barium, strontium, thorium, and cadmium, some of these are radioactive, sulfur dioxide, which is the maker of acid rain, sulfur hexafluoride, plastic or polymer fibers, and microcrystals, biological substances such as mold and fungal spores, algae, bacteria, and insect eggs, some of which may be genetically modified. The issue is becoming more something people are aware of. I would like to form a local committee, such as the people are doing with fracking and so forth, for those that want to explore this and other aspects of ending public poisoning. And I would like to also propose that the city and other bodies that can locally take something from what other communities are doing, including Suffolk County, New York on Long Island, Santa Cruz, California, San Anselmo and Fairfax, California, Maui, Hawaii, and others. And I'd like to read you a resolution from, portions of a resolution, from Fairfax, California, whereas the people of the town of Fairfax recognize that geoengineers are spraying particulate matter from jet airplanes, an activity which produces what are commonly referred to as chemtrails, and whereas they may cause unknown health and environmental consequences, be it resolved, blah, 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 you can come see me after if you want to get the full text, that we declare Fairfax a chemtrail-free zone, and we encourage all other municipalities in the United States of America and worldwide to do so.
I hate to say it, but we need to have one sacrificial lamb who went five seconds over. Thank you, John David Miller, and I'm sure you got your point across, though. I didn't cut off before you got to that point, so next I'll turn to Kevin Martin, and Kevin is going to talk about homeless veterans. Kevin?
Thank you.
And hold that up close, please.
Yes, sir. My name's Kevin Martin. I'm the commander of a BFW post, 8804, the old town called Marshfield. I'm also a member of the League of Women Voters, and most people know me, and I'm sure I'm not a woman, but I was fortunate. My partner Carol Patterson invited me to join the league, and I did, and I went to a couple of meetings, and I enjoyed it. Last year, at the open-mic town hall meeting, an issue came up about homeless individuals in Athens County, and so Carol came home and told me about it. I actually went to a meeting with Debbie and Ellsworth and John, and League was charged with an idea to study the concern of the homeless, and I thought, okay. So I sat there and kept my mouth shut for a few minutes, and I said, "What about the homeless veterans?" There's a lot of homeless veterans in southeastern Ohio, especially here at the hub. Athens City is the hub of the county, the state, obviously, the United States and the world. Tremendous amount of veterans here. There's been veterans in this part of the state, before it was a state, right around 1787, the first ones came in here. To be a veteran, you had to be a warfighter. There's warfighters in this room. We volunteer to protect the country. We go into war, we come home hopefully, and we're called a veteran. Never in the history of this southeastern Ohio or the county has there ever been a study on homeless veterans, ever. We have Revolutionary War veterans here. We have Afghanistan veterans here. So I talked to these people, and they said, "Well, form a committee and figure it out." So we started to form a committee, and we went and called every single township, city, county, agency in this entire county, and not one single one of them has a rule, a law, a code concerning homeless veterans. No agency here whatsoever has any way to intermingle and collect that data and say, "Hey, we have homeless veterans here. Where are they standing at? Why are they in the bridges? You know, why are they hiding behind restaurants? Why are the high university students sleeping on dormitory floors because they came back from a war, and no one's there to catch them in the net?" So my job is to form this committee. We have a grant, by the way. League of Women Voters helped write this, and we received this grant. So what we want to do is, the end result will be to establish policy in the city, in the county, so that there'll be a net there for the homeless veterans, so if we find one or one gets found, there's something there to help take care of there. Thank you very much.
Kevin, I'm slightly, I am aware that the Athens Municipal, Athens Metropolitan Housing Authority has started a program the past year or two with the VASH program, which is the Veterans Assistance Support Housing. I think they're already, the vouchers are already full, if I understand correctly, so there's none available at this point, but there is a program that's putting that in, has been putting that in place a couple of years. I assume it also is in other counties as well, but I do not know that. I'm just, I'm just peripheral to that knowledge. I know they have a voucher program to help assistance for homeless veterans, so. That's through the VA owner.
Hold it up close.
Okay. Okay, so that's as far as I know. We can check into more of that. My 30 seconds, I'm sure. Here you go.
Thank you, Paul. And thank you, Kevin Martin. If I didn't have a chance to say that, I forgot whether I did before the mayor spoke. Our next speaker is Jennifer Cochran, and the topic is bikeways. Jennifer Cochran, and hold this up close.
Thank you. I'm here as a private citizen. I'm a resident of the Far East Side, and my concern tonight is bikeways, which I think is part of a greater issue as far as wellness in our community, and that involves food, it involves nutrition, it involves so many different things, fracking, so many things that are integral to making this a wonderful place to live. And since coming to live on the Far East Side, I became aware of what an issue bikeways are to our community. Now that I bike my child to school during good weather, I would like the community to work more on increasing safety, whether it's through the Safe Routes to School program or through some other program. We need to increase awareness of bikes out there, especially when we're biking our children to school, and I see that Mark Barsamian just came in, and he was one of the people who got me started biking my child to school, and we actually have had something of a bike pool going to East Elementary School. We do use the bike path, but my primary concern now is that I see a lack of safety in our streets, and so I would like to ask for increased bike lanes on our city streets, especially areas like State Street and Stimson Avenue where the traffic is heavy and it can be harrowing to ride in the street. So we often find ourselves riding on the sidewalks where there may or may not be curbs, and that's another issue to get into as well. So I think that that's an issue that I would like to see the city working on and also increasing awareness among the citizens at large of making way for bikers when we're going about our day-to-day routines and getting to the places that we need to go, because biking is one way that we can contribute to sustainable living, reducing the carbon emissions that we're putting out into the atmosphere, and making this a more progressive and beautiful place to live. So that's a challenge to everyone in the room. It's been wonderful to hear all of the ideas, and I am a candidate for city council at large, so thanks for having us tonight.
I'm going the wrong way here, Andy.
If I can speak to a couple of points, certainly want to solicit input as to needed improvements when we're doing the Safe Routes to School program. That is something that we use pretty regularly to try to make spot improvements to kind of unsafe locations, and one of the things we've found over the past five years doing this program is we really grabbed a lot of the, low-hanging fruit's not the right word, but some of the easier-to-do things that we identified at the initial school travel plan with both sidewalks and bike facilities, and subsequently, we've kind of run out of those. You wouldn't think building a sidewalk would be controversial, but it's probably one of the most controversial things that I do for one reason or another, just because of the change that kind of comes along with it. That's on the sidewalk portion. The bike portion, I did want to bring up, the Lancaster Columbus Road project does incorporate bike lanes. It's a significant arterial that is going to be served by either bike lanes or white shoulders, so that's one that will go this summer. East State Street, Stimson Avenue are kind of some hard nuts to crack. The Richland South project also will incorporate bike lanes, so that's all the way down to Canterbury. So we're moving in the direction, we really are, but certainly if you can bring to me those choke points, that's very helpful when we're doing our planning on any construction improvements.
Thank you, Andy Stone, and thank you, Jennifer Cochran. Next, I'll call upon Karen Dunn, and her topic is Neighborhood Watch. And don't forget to speak up close. If you can't hear me, get closer to the mic, that is.
Thank you. Good evening. Today I had the privilege of a student coming from the Buonivice Center to ask about the neighborhood associations, and as I was talking about the history of the Anna Association, of which I belong, and others, it occurred to me that many of the topics that we had in the forefront 10, 15 years ago are now all solved, and so we want to thank the administrations of both current and past for doing that. It does bring hope for the future, quality of life and so forth. It makes us feel very proud to be part of the neighborhoods in Athens. But thinking of the future, now that I am officially a senior citizen, I retired from university a few months ago, I'm starting to think along those lines and what Carolyn and Robin said, limitations for senior citizens. I do want to emphasize for our administration that it would be great to be I do want to emphasize for our administration that it would be great to be on the top 10 list for senior citizens that you see in all the magazines, and I think that we really have to think about making this a more senior-friendly place to stay so that we don't lose our older people off to North Carolina or wherever it goes. So on that note also, I wanted to remind Chief Pyle, Chief Pyle, a few months ago, you came to a couple of meetings where I was and began to speak very enthusiastically about some modifications of the old Neighborhood Watch idea. And I know that we did a questionnaire among the ANA residents, and we got some feedback, and now it's silent. So I'm hoping that that is not an issue that has died, because I think in terms of all the issues that I just spoke of, quality of life, and certainly for older residents and for younger families, Neighborhood Watch is something that we would like to see part of our, our neighborhoods. So that's what it means.
Ellsworth. Pardon me? Chief, say.
Yes. Certainly. Chief Pyle. Yeah, certainly, on a side note, Karen, I'm still, still very much interested in getting that kind of a program going. In fact, we did a PSA with the Government Channel to promote the notion of Neighborhood Watch, and I'm not, I'm not sure if it's running yet or not, but it is running.
Running.
Runs, yeah. Tell them it is. And I think the problem is, is that we've not reached enough people for it to have a significant impact. And, you know, I've heard four or five names thrown out from each neighborhood association, and really, that's 20 people citywide is not going to make a very effective Neighborhood Watch. We really need, you know, 20% or something along those lines of the city's population to agree, to participate, even if it's just a phone relay kind of Neighborhood Watch. If we can get to that level of commitment, then, then we can certainly set something up. But you know, it, it does occur to me that we kind of have an impromptu Neighborhood Watch with those 20 people already, because they are regularly calling in issues to the police department, complaints, and, and giving us information. So just the notion of bringing up the, the watch and getting people to, when they see something, say something to the police department, has been relatively effective so far. So I still want to do it, but we just got to really promote it a little better.
Thank you, Chief Pyle. Next, I'd like to call upon Melina Miller, and her topic is Bill of Rights. Melina Miller, and hold it up close.
Oh, it's a, it's a lousy unidirectional microphone, but I'm a theater major, so there you go. But I am going to park it. This is what you should do. Okay, so our mayor has said, I'm going to try to really do this in three minutes, that the law says we, we have no say in it, but we in the Bill of Rights Committee believe that we do have a say in it. And so I'd like to quote from the city's own 2011 Confidence Report here about water, okay? So water is my concern. All the fracking things that go on water. This is the water report from the city of Athens, 2011. It concerns a groundwater study from 2003 by the EPA and the city, whose purposes were to detect volatile organic compounds and identify potential contaminants and the protect, and identify the protection of the drinking water. So you can read all of that in the study. But the study was done because there were some issues from the 1990s, and according to the study, the aquifer that supplies water to our city of Athens has a high susceptibility to contamination. I won't go into the details about why that's, but that's in here, okay? So why make it worse? Why make it more, you know, difficult and challenging? Hydraulic fracking contains, let me just quote the House Energy Commerce Committee, in 2011, found that fracking fluids contained 750 chemicals, some of which were very hazardous to human health, including benzene, lead, even diesel fuel, which includes one of my favorites, toluene. Toluene is the only one that is subject to and required to be, for us to know about that's going. We don't need to know, and we can't know about these other chemicals that are being injected into the wells, because in 2005, our ex-Vice President Dick Cheney, who was previous president of Halliburton, got in a little loophole, called the Halliburton Loophole, to the Safe Water, Drinking Water Act, that disallows all of us, the consumers, those of us who just want clean, fresh, safe drinking water, to know what kind of, what they call proprietary chemicals are in, being injected into these injection wells by the fracking gas and oil industry. Most of this stuff right now that's coming in as wastewater is coming from Pennsylvania and West Virginia, because they have the Marcellus Shale. It's too geologically unstable for them to inject the wastewater back into these deep reservoirs and these deep places, and so they bring it to Ohio because our governor has made contracts with them to do so. It's terribly unsafe, and, and there are fissures in the ground that can make this even more unstable. I'm just going to cut to the chase. You know, I only have 30 seconds left. This is the recent, this is the recent study from the C-8 panel of the DuPont, the famous DuPont study. I'm one of the 70,000 residents, South Cannon Road, Route 50, West Virginia. A lot of them are dead from the C-8 that was injected into our water for, for years, of which we knew nothing about. So don't let this happen. I beg the city, please, please, let us have clean, safe water. It's our right. It's in the Bill of Rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Melina Miller. Next, I have the name of Dick Hogan, and I don't have a topic. Okay, not here, all right? And Mark Barsamian, are you here, Mark? Come right on up, please. Oh, okay. Walk slowly. Walk slowly, Mark.
We just wanted to say, to the city engineer, actually, the city as a whole, the water is safe, the city of Athens water is safe and good for you, and that also last year council took action to prohibit that kind of activity in our wellhead protection, so...
Thank you. Mark Barsamians of the Far East Neighborhood Association, and the topic, upcoming initiatives of the Far East Neighborhood Association. That's what I have.
I'm actually not sure exactly what I'm supposed to say here. I'm Mark Barsamian. I'm on the, the list of officers of the Far, of the new Far East Side Neighborhood Association. We formed over the course of the last year and a half, we had a, we had sort of preliminary meetings to see if there's enough interest to form a Neighborhood Association on the far east side, which is the part of Athens beyond Route 33, and there was plenty of interest, so we, we had our official meeting in the fall where we approved our bylaws. So we have bylaws, we have a slate of, a slate of officers, and our organization is, based on committees, we have, I guess, four main committees, a beautification committee, a committee that's functioned as to run social, social functions, a code enforcement committee, and a pedestrian safety committee. So some of the things that we are interested in are, you know, beautification is some of the obvious things, keeping an eye on, on slightly things in the neighborhood, but also, a lot of us are fond of Sales Park, for instance, and the pond at Sales Park, and a lot of us are curious to know what might be done to, to make Sales Park sort of even better. A lot of us are curious about that pond, what's been done with the pond, what's the status of it, what could be done, who would we talk to about getting the pond, you know, sort of spruced up, because there's a lot of, a lot of people that go, go there. Social functions, we have a summer shindig every, every summer in Sales Park. We've had two now. We, we are now getting close to our winter gathering, which is going to be a soup potluck here in the community center. The, the entertainment will be Betty Hawk and her slideshow of old slides of, of this part of Athens. She's got slides of the, the grand opening of Sales Park, which is now sort of seems like ancient history. One of our committees is the pedestrian safety committee. I'm on that one, actually, are, a lot of us are interested in, in various pedestrian issues. I bicycle to work, but I also run on these streets, and I walk to the stores over here, and I see hundreds of people on the bike path every day going to work, or out running, or walking kids or dogs. I see people on the trails, and a lot of us are concerned about the sort of crummy experience that pedestrians have, this whole east end of Athens. I mean, it's, it's mayhem down here for cars, but it's, it's dangerous mayhem for pedestrians of all sorts, so there, so we all have a different interest, and, and we're all coming together in this great new organization, which I think you'll hear more of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark Barsamian. Well, I've gone through the list of those who have asked to speak, and I can't help thinking as I sat here and listened to all those thoughtful ideas. This evening, sponsored by the city of Athens and the League of Women Voters, and if you think of this as local government in action, I think all of us here this evening could be proud to trot this around the world and show anybody, anyplace, this is local government in action in Athens, Ohio. We would probably, if I dare say so, put to shame most of the world. And, and as all of you know, why the concerns and challenges raised tonight, carefully recorded by Ron Lucas, and Mayor Wile and his staff are going to be wrestling with these, and we will have a companion town hall meeting probably in June, and then we'll all get to listen to the responses of our city administration. And I think that twice a year is a really magnificent pattern that we've had for several years. So thank you very much, all of you, for coming this evening, and word dismissed.